Be too late, Susan.
We thank you for this beautiful Lord's day. We thank you for the blessings of life, Lord, that you bestowed upon us. And Lord, we just ask you today, just before the day God directs us to end this meeting, that we perform our duties here with the town of Bronson, and that everything we do be believed in your eyes. And you just stand with prayer. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the very body of the Christian statements, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice of our world.
All right. Thank you everyone for coming out from that. Road calls. Curtis is here. Wendy is here. Sue is here. Tyler is here. All right. Everyone, please keep Franklin and Virginia prayers. He's still having some issues to understand with his speech and everything. We just want to keep him. And another thing I've got on my mind is Miss Freya Freeman's family, please, please keep them as your prayer students. Freya passed away yesterday. And she has been a loyal supporter of Bronson for many, 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 many years, working diligently in voting precincts. And she will definitely be here. So please keep them in your prayers also. Sue. Moving on. Tyler's here again. Franklin is not going to be there. I'm assuming, correct? I am here. Mr. Kenya's here. Siri is on her way. She's here a little bit late. And Mr. Warren is here with us tonight. Glad to have you, sir. That'd be here. Also, Dale is here. And we have our newest employee here with us tonight, also. You all stand up here and introduce yourself to everybody, especially the person right here.
[laughing]
Right here? Right here?
[laughing]
Yeah, everyone, I'm Rodney Thomas. I'm, I'm, I'm in Bronson, from Bronson. I've been here all my life. I spent some time in the military, moved up seven different places, but this has been home for me. So, yeah, I'm here. Tried out this other position. So far, everything is going good. You know, I'm enjoying it. And I'm looking forward to it.
Sounds great. Rodney, good to have you with us. But we, Rodney is going to be taking over the inmate?
Yes, inmate work group.
So, with that being said, all right, so, all right, have you had a chance to look over the agenda?
New approval of the agenda.
I second.
The property moved to the second. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Eye.
Pose, motion carries. And minutes for the November twentieth town council meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for the twentieth town council meeting.
Same.
Again, the property moved to the second. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Eye.
Pose, same motion carries. Focus participation. I will go through this again, make everybody aware. You need to complete the speaker request. You'll have it to the deputy clerk, first opposed, then clearly state your full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. Okay? Next information items. We did not have anybody sign it. Okay? Information items. Our next town council meeting will be December the eighteenth here at six P M. Any discussion on that? And the town hall will be closed Monday, December the twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, December the twenty-sixth, so we can be with our families to celebrate Christmas.
And in front of the food of the making?
Oh, yes. Excuse me. That came in late. Okay. The mobile food, the mobile food, the mobile pantry food distribution will be December the twenty-second. That's the Friday before Christmas at nine thirty A M. When they get ready. And they put a notation in here. I think they have been having, the lines have been so long, that they, because the people living down here is kind of having some problems. So they asked people to please, after the parking lot is, and lines open one hour before the start time. So in other words, don't go down there day before and get in line. Or we may have to ask you to leave and come back later on. And they're going to try to enforce that pretty strictly. So please do not get there before eight thirty. And if you pass that on to all the other people who don't like it. All right, Ms. Sue?
All right. Like the agenda tonight. So first up, I have reappointment. Goodness, she's here. I didn't actually know she was talking about it. But Ms. Bee, well, as you guys know, for the audience, we formed a code enforcement board in the town of Bronson in December of two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Beatrice Roberts was appointed at that point on December sixth of two thousand twenty-one to a one-year term. And she was reappointed December fifth of two thousand twenty-two to another one-year term. And we need her to go on for another one-year term effective tonight, unless she's opposed to it for some reason.
Okay.
I don't even think we've met all year, but we, it's on my agenda.
It should be emotional.
Yes.
Okay. New approval of the appointment of Beatrice Roberts for a one-year term on code enforcement board.
I second.
Probably move to the second. Again, all those in favor, signify the same eye.
Eye.
Pose, same motion carries. Welcome back.
Yeah. And then same thing with David White. David White had a two-year appointment. So he was appointed on December sixth of two thousand twenty-one. So we need to reappoint him to another two-year term effective today.
New approval, David White, third two-year term to code enforcement board.
Yes, they're good.
Again, probably move to the second. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Eye.
Pose, same motion carries. Should have come through, David.
All right. So next up, I'm going to give you a little, just so ABM doesn't have to do all the heavy lifting here. So we've been going back and forth, myself and Curtis, with Vic Hill and Ray Jordan of ABM for, I don't know, it feels like forever, but definitely several months now, to kind of pare down what we originally wanted to do for the town. Unfortunately, it just, the project got very bloated. I mean, while I would love to do everything that we originally proposed, the price tag was well over two million dollars at one point. And I just, I didn't want to sell the, you know, twenty-year from now board with that kind of a funding request. So the last time we met, I asked them to basically pare this entire program down to just the replacement of the commercial water meters in a brand-new billing system. So we would have the residential water meters would all be replaced on the C D B G grant. The commercial water meters would be replaced by A B M. We would get a brand-new billing system. It allows for, you know, automatic payment plan and things like that. And I also basically asked them to have a self-funding project where basically this project is entirely funded by the savings or the revenue from the commercial meters or the residential meters that they changed when on before came in and did the testing back in January. So that's where we're at today, but it has taken a long time to get here. So I'm going to let Vic take it from there.
Well, you pretty much covered everything. Thank you. I would like to say thank you. And you did cover almost everything that we have. We have a presentation, a powerful one. I do want to say, I have Ray Jordan with me. He is the Southeast Asian Director. And he will help us, as we go through this. And I will try to be brief, but I will say this. Please stop and ask questions or ready to peace talking. Please ask questions. As Sue said, when we first began, there was a great deal of stuff that we were looking at. We have pared it down, working with Sue and Curtis. And I take my hat off to both of them. They are diligent. They have been unbelievably loyal to us. And together, I think it's a plan that we finally came out and pulled off together. But I think we'd be beneficial to the town of Bronson. I, I love the small-town atmosphere. I'm from a small town also. Not smaller, actually than Bronson. So I love the small-town atmosphere. So thank you all for allowing us to be here. And just we'll talk through, as we move forward, I'm looking at this third page, and I'm actually going to, as Sue said, we look at a host of things, but we settled on looking at the replacement of the commercial water meters. And the last statement at the very bottom of that page, we were, we were adamant, we wanted to find a project that was self-funded, that through the revenues will be generated, so that for the process, it will be no upfront money from the town of Bronson. There will be no money taken until after the year, a year after construction is complete, to allow the revenue to be generated. So it's kind of, and we'll talk through that process in just a few minutes. But we did want to look at the replacement of the water meters. Where we are as the next step is just, I wanted to present to you, I was here several months ago, and if you will remember, we had a whole host of things that we discussed. And we were looking at, and we did look at, and we, I know that there are some needs, but at the same time, you've got to be realistic in looking at what, what is most critical and most crucial, or what is that could fund itself and provide a benefit to the town. And that's kind of where we focused on the commercial water meters. We did have an independent party come in, their N I S T, and I looked that up because I always forget that acronym, National Institutes of something in technology. I can't remember. I'm sorry. Anyway, this third party to test the meters. So we did a random sampling, and it was proven, shown that the meters were approximately seventy-five percent accurate, four meters. And we tested commercial and residential as well. So we had a good sampling of both of those. And I know that the grant will cover residential, but those were tested at the same rate as well. And Sue sends them that, we've got that information. But in ours, it's a hundred and twenty-seven, three-quarter inch, this is commercial, I'm sorry, hundred and twenty-seven, three-quarter inch, six, one inch, one, one and a half inch, twenty-eight, two inch, and two, four inch, which makes up the commercial meters that we're talking about in this project. What we would do is replace the meters, and we would guarantee a ninety-nine percent accuracy over the course of the term. Where we are now is just to present to you, I tell you, that we've looked at the commercial meters. We want to, we've talked with Sue, and I think we have a little bit more discussion between Sue and attorney, we put them on both of them until it's fairly comfortable, about presenting to you a resolution that allows Sue, on behalf of the town, to enter into an agreement with us, so that we can begin to lock down financing. We talked, we, we don't finance, but we work finance companies all over the country to try to get the best rates, and we want to do this, this on a regular basis. That resolution allows us, enters into the contract, but allows us to enter into discussion on behalf of the town with Sue, to, to try to get the financing that, that we would have to have. We can't lock down interest rates till we get to that point. So when we got some speculative, and we're usually relatively accurate, which I know how the market is, I pray that it goes down. But we can't lock it in with one-hundred percent certainty until after that. And I understand you all are getting the things. So hopefully, by then, soon, we could come back to the resolution. And I will be here, although I want to go ahead and tell you, that is my forty-first anniversary.
Good female.
So, but if, but if we're meeting, I'll be here.
Is what we're doing.
What?
Is what we're doing.
I might do that. But as we move forward, kind of a general on this page is the one I'm looking at, is kind of a general outline. Tonight, we're presenting in January, February, really now we're looking at December, of getting a, or getting approval. Then we will go into the financial aspects. Sue will be as actively involved in that, to iron that down. You would have to approve that also. So there are two things to approve. One will be the resolution. Second one will come later, will be the financing part of that. Then we would simply start working on the project. And ballpark, these dates, we've got March or April, we'll do the installation. But what we did on this pie chart is basically said with the energy savings, basically the operational savings and lost water revenue, we were able to provide her, I'm sorry, the town, its self-funded project. This page is a twenty-year cash flow. The great speaks this language better than I. So I would ask him to come to that place.
Okay. It's good to be back in front of you. I was a good while. I was here when we started this process in twenty-two, and I got moved to Georgia. And then we did some rearranging, and I ended up getting Vic back. So, so it's a pleasure to be back in front of you tonight. We like to show, to keep in mind, that savings or, or revenue generation increases are guaranteed. So we're guaranteed a ninety-nine percent water meter accuracy throughout the process. So we also only capture the increased revenue that you will receive from the commercial meters. So good news is, your savings or increased revenue are going to go up significantly when you install the residential, because you'll have very similar savings or even more savings from the residential, without the cost. So the blue boxes are where money comes from to pay for your meters. The first blue column is utility operations, maintenance, and debt rep. So in your case, very little operational savings, a little gasoline, little wear and tear on cars and vehicles, that kind of stuff. But the biggest part is that you have some software that you're paying for now, that you won't have to pay for in the future. And so it's right at about nine thousand or more of that is software costs that you're currently spending, that you won't have to pay for. The revenue contributors, that is the increased revenue that you see from the increased accuracy of your meters. You'll notice that that goes up, that goes up with the cost of inflation, also taking into account the rate structure that you have and the increased rates that you recently put in place. So that middle column, third column, gives you the total amount, total amount. And you notice the third and fourth are the same. So it is at the top, I should have started there, the total cost of trying to turn to you, six hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Now, that includes a ten-thousand-dollar amount for Miss Sue to contract with a software company, or SCARDA. We, we, she, she said, I need to get into it without any upfront costs. So her upfront cost to install the new software for billing and so forth is included in the amount of the project. We were able to get a five point four-nine. Hopefully, between now and the time we do the financing in January, that may come down a little bit. We're seeing some, some positive moves in the market there, near the twenty-year program. So that twenty-year lease would cost you forty-four thousand, two dollars in year one. I'm just using the year one number. You'll notice that it escalates just as your, your revenue escalates. That's intentional, so that your payment goes up as your revenue goes up. Otherwise, your payment would be flat in year one, and you have a lot of money in the bank in year twenty. So it escalates as you pay. Performance services, that's not, that's not money you're borrowing, not money you're saving. It's money you're going to have to spend, but Sue wanted it to be accounted for. That includes annual upkeep of the billing software and meter management software. So that's included in the cash flow. If y'all will pay that with a account runs a check, which you'll earn the money to pay through the project. So as you see, the total annual cost is fifty-six thousand, oh fifty-two in year one. The total money produced is fifty-six thousand, one thirty-four, for an excess of eighty-two dollars. And that is maintained all the way down, because everything escalates at the same rate. So today, you can go into a fully new radio read, it's not, it's not, it's A M I, so it's, it's automatically collected. You don't have to drive by and go to read meters. The project does include a belt, a belt clip, A M R meter, in case the network is down. You can drive by and collect in case something happens to the network. But that's very rare to detect. But in any way, we, we started this big mission with all kinds of hooks and bridges for solar lights in a, in a recreation department, for fixing some valves. And honestly, we could have kept doing some of that self-funding this way. But this is where I'll also follow clues from Miss Sue. She was very particular in the cause. She's, she don't have that check to put in those residential meters yet. And she didn't want to commit any of that revenue in which y'all invited. So she's been very, very conservative with, with your finances. But there's the, there's the project as, as far as the way it's paid for, how much it costs, how you pay for it. No out-of-pocket money when the project begins, no out-of-pocket money when construction ends. You make your first payment to the lender at the end of a full year after construction. Any questions about the move?
Anybody got anything?
I, if I'm, I'm not voting, I'm obviously, I'm just the attorney, but I need to understand something. What is, what is the very last column on the ground? What is that second column?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The cumulative cash flow. How do you determine that?
It, it's the, the funding used for lease obligation minus the annual cost. It's the last column, last blue column, minus the last white column. Trek fifty-six, one thirty-four, it's a track fifty-six, oh fifty-two, from yesterday, eighty-two.
Okay. So in other words, that's a positive cash benefit.
Yes.
Problem you have.
Yes. And we believe that, we do believe that's conservative, because we, we tend to do that. We really put more money towards the bottom line than on the.
And I will say, if you generate for it, it does come with, it says in the town, so. All right. Sue, you and Curtis have been the workforces in on this thing. Y'all got any, any really contributing to this before we move on?
Um, do you need a, what county do you want us to win till we have the full resolution?
The, the, the.
I agree.
Yeah, that's, that's, the resolution is what we'll need to move forward with financing. But if they're in agreement, then of course I can get the resolution, or we can.
I'm, I'm working on the resolution, and I'm looking at the agreement in a little bit more detail. So if I may, and this is all very positive. I'm not.
Oh, no.
I'm working against you. Defer it to the next meeting. I think we'll all be better prepared.
You know, I'll tell you, I'm willing to fix the home in this week, with the end of this day. I'll.
No.
I'll explain.
I promise you.
What we will do, even with, with just your verbal nods, if this looks good, we'll go on it and make sure we get contracts started, so we get final documents in the attorney's hands, for, as far as the, the contract is.
That's right.
So basically now, we just doing commercial meters, the one.
Correct.
One and twenty-seven.
Correct. And, and that's a breakdown is.
Right. The only question that I have, the thing that I have that my concern is based on customer use. And it's almost like we hoping that we get this, that they use more water, or the meters read more accurately, so we can have more income to pay for what we're getting. So again, to me, it's based on consumer use. If the consumer use go down, where is the revenue going to come from?
And, and that is absolutely correct.
That, that's.
But it's not based on, Curtis, just to make sure, it's not based on, on increased use. It's based on current use.
Current use.
If you keep using, but as folks, that's natural. You know, if you use less water, you're going to draw, you're going to bring in less money.
Right.
And we can't guarantee consumption.
But Curtis, I mean, think of it this way. These are the commercial meters, right? So you're talking about the school district, the jail, you know, dollar.
We don't have a hundred and twenty.
His staff, the community does not use less water. They may be more conservative with the water they use. But his staff, they did not use less water, in particular, in the commercial arena.
Right.
And this is conservative estimates based on consumption. Though we can't guarantee consumption, but we can guarantee the accuracy of the meters. If you're getting an approximate seventy percent reading now, and it goes to a ninety-nine percent, that's going to generate a substantial additional revenue. A hundred and forty commercial meters, seems like a lot.
We don't have, my thing is, when we talk about commercial, we're talking about businesses, right?
Correct.
We don't have that many businesses here.
No, but we've got, and he's just classifying meter size. But.
Right. But then, then I think.
See, it's like, I have a two-inch meter at my house.
Right.
That I, that I put in. And I'm one of those two-inch ones that you see on.
Okay.
And that, I, I, I don't know, I could not give you an address, although we've got folks that can, that can wonder, because they came in. And with purpose.
Right.
They, they've gotten very accurate. And they looked at every single one of them, they mapped it out. But now I don't have that information. So I. Okay. And I do have one question. It's okay, expectation here is for Bronson to grow. It's exceptionally growth, from what we're possibly seeing, especially with these subdivisions and everything else that we're addressing under right now. How is that going to impact this? It, it can't be nothing but positive. And that's all I can. What we're looking at is replacing the commercial meters that we've got on our list. I mean, voters coming in, I, I mean, I can see it. But I mean, what, what I'm addressing that to, I mean, I, with the expectation of growth from just normal growth, houses, whatever, commercial growth could also, it should.
If, if these meters start using more water because they're serving more people as a business, then your revenue is going to grow. Your cost won't, but your revenue will.
Right. And, and we did, like I said, the company, they did test not just commercials, but residential. And the A M I is set up, so it will be in place for the commercial. But it is also understood that it will kick up residential. And I understand that we're only talking about the meters that we've ever placed right now.
The future.
But even though, as, as, as Ray was saying, as companies, as growth occurs, and is use more water to produce or to do what they're doing, and their revenue in fact will, like I said, we're about to be conservative, purposeful, because we needed to show you something as a town, because your concern is the town. I mean, it's just like, right now, the expectation for our school systems are to continue to grow, I think. I'm a retired school superintendent, regular retired school superintendent. I know the fact that our jails are not going to decrease in sizes, okay? Everywhere else we've seen it going up and up and up. So that, that, that expectation is to continue to grow. And, and I will say this, and, and mean it. I would love for this to be a success all the way around, to the point where some additional revenues are generated. And Sue called in and said, Vic, let's look at some of this other stuff now. And we'll come back and look at some possibilities for some other things, because this has turned out to be a positive experience.
To put an example of how that growth could be impacted, you have students, current. If you put additional hundred kids in the building, not having a building you built, but inside the existing building, with the existing infrastructure, that building's going to use more water.
Oh, absolutely.
They're going to flush the toilet lower. They're going to be, pour more water in the laundry room. It's just going to increase the consumption. And that consumption is just directly to your bottom line.
Any other questions?
The grant.
All right, go ahead.
Question. How many commercials do we have? Commercial?
One twenty-seven?
A hundred and twenty-seven, three-quarter inch, it's, it's in the one of the sheets that I've been working on.
Eight-five.
Yeah, there are a hundred and twenty-seven, three-quarter inch, six, one inch, one, one and a half inch, twenty-eight.
No, you don't have to, but all of them are commercials. I don't have more. How much, how much is it going to cost? The town?
Six hundred eighty-seven.
Six hundred eighty, well, six hundred, yeah, ten of that is for, for, six hundred eighty-six thousand total.
In my vision, y'all, that also includes the ninety-five thousand. Ninety-five thousand of that is the meter testing that we did, both your commercial and your residential meters, to establish the base line. So, so a good bit of that, actually, this project's like five-eighty, and then ninety-five thousand of it is the testing we did for.
So the, the meters that we have, they haven't been tested yet?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. A sample, we're not, not just all a hundred and forty. We did a random sampling, and I don't.
How many did you test? Just.
There, we let the, we let.
We stayed out of the third party.
The profiler.
Well, you should know this, you know, because you know, you know, questions when you come to a meeting. You should know.
I, I don't know how many.
Curtis knows how many have been checked out. Seventy, seventy-five or eighty meters we checked.
Yeah, I mean, what happened? They found out that. Yeah, I mean, what happened, they found out that, you know, testing, taking the meters, taking them out, testing them, it became more cumbersome in timeframe. So they didn't do all of them. They did, they, I think maybe a hundred and fifty, I, I have it down somewhere. All the meters wasn't tested.
And please understand, there was another person in charge of running this when, when that was done. Dick and I were coming in kind of on the back, back, back.
So how bad was, you know, how much was...
They, they were approximately reading seventy-five percent accuracy.
Okay, and the commercials, the ones in town? Did you test those?
Let me tell you this.
These have just...
Commercial meters wasn't that for all.
And see, that's what I'm saying, because most of those commercials are new. Now, if you was doing the residential, that would be a different story. But most of those commercial meters are new and they're not, they're not off like that.
Calculations, calculations that you've been providing of increased revenue, a portion of that is for accuracy, a portion of it is for the increases that you pass based on that accuracy. It is not a huge number based on that. But those numbers are accurate to the degree of accuracy of the meters we tested. So we say it's seventy-five percent, that's overall. But the commercial meters may have been eighty, eighty percent or...
Nine, nine-five.
But still, you're gonna have some picture.
But that's all you're doing is the commercial. And you say if the school add another hundred kids and you're gonna be flushing more, using more. Right after, even with the old meters, if they add a hundred kids, you're still gonna use more and add more. So that's why I was just trying to see that.
And, and that's a great, great question, just thank you.
Logic, yeah.
Great.
I love it. You know, to spend that much money, which I know the town don't have, but do we have that?
And that's, that's why, that's why it was important to do a self-funding project and be able to show the increased revenue occurred. Otherwise, like I said, we, we had other things we could have that if they weren't, wanna fund themselves, then we knew it was not something we could address at this time. All right, any other questions?
So is this the system that worked for the ones that were replacing the grants? I thought those were AMR.
They're AMR currently, so we're gonna have to go back. I mean, this is our hope, is once these are done, because obviously the commercial ones are gonna get done far faster than the residential ones. So once that's done, Midtown or for Fox or whoever goes back to the state and says, okay, well, we've actually got the AMI for the commercial side, we wanna now change the residential to be AMI also. So we're trying to change order on the grant. But we figured this can only help us if we want to copy.
And that was, that was actually a conversation with Fox and Midtown. And I actually went to sit down with them, kind of to explain to them what we were trying to do and what we wanted to do and what soon they were looking at as far as AMI. And his words were, well, if they do the commercial with AMI, then it'll be so much easier for us to write it up and get a change order. So that's part of the process we've been discussing. But again, that will be through the town and then...
So if that, if that takes a while to come to fruition, though, and you have to do the AMR installation, you're still gonna be in a position to read those AMR meters by drive-by because we're including that AMR device in what we're providing.
More excuses, that's obviously not playing.
Do we get a grant for that, for the residential ones?
Yes.
Residential, but not, how are we gonna pay for the commercial with this?
Self-funded. It's self-funded. Okay. Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna table, you said you wanna table this till the next meeting, did you get the resolution?
I make a motion that we tabled this discussion till the next meeting, we're waiting on the resolution.
We have a motion, do it here, second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we table this for the next meeting. All those in favor, signify by the same eye. And opposed, same, motion carried. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in your packet, the very first thing is the resolution, resolution number twenty-three, twenty-six. But before I go there, I wanna kinda explain where we're at with the baby blocks. So first and foremost, I did go to the Baby Box Blessing at the City of Newbury on Thursday evening. It was a lovely presentation, there were probably thirty or forty people there. The city manager spoke, the mayor spoke, the fire chief spoke, and the owner of St. David's Baby Box also spoke. So she gave a, you know, background as to exactly how this whole thing started. Again, she explained that, you know, it was her father went to jail for raping her mother. It was a terrible story, but, you know, she was dropped as an infant, that's why she came up with this idea. This is the, Newbury was box one-eighty-five in the U.S. They've saved a hundred and seventy babies in the last six years. So Newbury obviously did theirs through fundraising. I did talk to Monica and I talked to the mayor and the fire chief while we were trying to do a Bronson and was able to get Monica to send us this lease contract that's in your packet. It is, I've read it, I don't know if you're gonna have a chance to read it yet, but it pretty much mirrors exactly the City of Newbury's lease and service agreement that was in your packet last time. So I put in your summary the exact same thing. So it's a five-year term. The initial fee is either eleven thousand or twelve thousand with the camera option, depending on if you wanna do the camera. The annual fee is three hundred dollars for recertification. And there's a three hundred dollar annual fee for alarm monitoring. Again, the fire department would provide twenty-four-hour alarm monitoring. We have to list them as an additional insured on our general liability insurance policy. And then, again, the fire department has to do daily and weekly testing. I did explain to her that the council was hesitant to do an ordinance. She understood, she said that's exactly what happened in Newbury and in Ocala. So she understood that you guys were hesitant and you wanted to go with the lease and service agreement. And I think we're pretty much, at this point, I think we've had all of our questions answered and I think we're pretty much good to go. And then Chief Ogilvy from Newbury sent us the invoice today on how much it cost them to actually install it by putting the hole in the fire station. And it was eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. So all in, we're looking at somewhere in the twenty-one to twenty-two thousand dollar range, which is what they wrote on their website, so, with everything, the purchasing the box, installing the box, the monitoring. And then they would do the exact same thing as they did in Newbury. They would come here, they would do a baby box blessing ceremony, where, you know, people would get up and speak and have questions answered, presses there and all that sort of thing. So in your packet is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-six, authorizing the execution of a contract regarding the installation maintenance of the baby box.
The question came up that, did I look at the agreement? I did look at the agreement. And assuming we want to go forward with, with what the proposal is, the agreement, this project quite accurately, there is no difference.
Do you want to make anything to add?
Okay.
Do you have anything to add, obviously?
Pleasure to the council.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. What, what is the fire department's, they probably know, just the way I run that today. Does the fire department have a position on this? Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
You're there?
Yes, we are.
I mean, the reason I ask is because the facility is there and...
Right, it was also put into the state appropriate.
I heard, yeah, okay, all right. Didn't mean that you're, sorry.
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six.
We don't hold the resolution, what do you?
Well, the resolution...
Is accepting the agreement?
Is accepting the agreement, correct.
We have a motion in a second, we'll, we'll discuss. All those in favor, signify by the same eye. Opposed, same, motion carried.
Baby Box, done. All right, last up on my agenda is the community movie nights in the park. So interestingly enough, my newfound family that I went to for Thanksgiving this year, my president, who I just met for the first time, he's a photographer. And after everybody ate at Thanksgiving, he put out this gigantic twenty-foot screen that's inflatable and you put a, it's got Velcro all along it and there's a picture of it in your packet. But you kind of put this white screen in the middle of it and then you can have a projector put your movie on. So he sent me all the information on it, the projector, the projector stand. I talked to Rod and asked if he could do the audio for it. So all in, if we do the movie, do all of the setup, everything that we've got, we can purchase on Amazon, we'd be looking at about eight hundred and fifty dollars for the one movie. Obviously, it would be less if we wanna commit to doing multiple movies next summer. They'd give us that, you know, better price to do the three movies. But I think this is a good way to go because it's nice and big, it's huge.
We're gonna try to do the one in December, we do this.
Yep, you're just gonna tell me what day you wanna have it? Because I think they needed two weeks' notice if the movie plays, as I recall. You wanna do a Friday night, you turn to a Friday?
Well, I just, I just kept it up. They asked for a date, so I just like looked at the date when I knew we wouldn't have, we didn't have anything going on at the school. And so the fifteenth was that date. And so, like I said, in order to do the, ask for the quote, you have to pick a day. So I picked, I just picked that Friday because I know we didn't have any games or anything going on that day.
When are kids out of school?
The kids don't get out of school until the twentieth.
Twentieth?
It's that Wednesday.
Fifteen won't work, they need two weeks.
Do you want it during the week or does it have to be a weekend or? I don't know.
About twenty-third, twelve?
I think twenty-third.
Well, I can't, doesn't mean you can't.
I know. I wasn't getting married on twenty-third. Um, twenty-first? It's Thursday? The kids gonna be out of school? First to work in that fall?
The kids are, they're probably...
It means the goal to have the kids out of school or not out of school?
They would have to be out of school, they thought for two weeks because...
Yeah, but do you have to do it? You could, I mean, I know it's a Christmas movie, but you don't necessarily have to do it the week, like, before Christmas. You could do it between Christmas and New Year.
And they just show whatever and do what happens?
I mean, you could do a Christmas type, like a winter type movie, doesn't necessarily have to be...
We could take this thing and put it down here in the floor, smash it on there, you're speaking.
You could, you could.
Hey, you want us first?
I'm on the twenty-first.
The twentieth?
I like the twenty-first, I mean, the twentieth church is probably looking at like that. And we, we are ready to go. Do we have any, do we want the first?
Also.
No.
The Baptist church is happening there.
So we don't think they would show us on the Saturday, or not?
It's the first night, in the shi...
It's Saturday.
It's like every Saturday, until Christmas.
So if we do the Thursday, then you don't conflict with that?
Yeah.
If we do the twenty-first?
And then the kids are gonna be excited because they just got out of school too, so. Parents are gonna be...
If y'all do it the twenty-first, y'all need staff or some people that put in to be off.
On that, on the twenty-first, or they already be off?
There's some people that are put in to be off.
On that day?
Yeah. I'm one of...
I'm one of them. He meant mine.
Well, Rod, you're in a position, so...
Yeah, Rod, you're the newbie, so can you work the day?
No, but he, he...
I may be new, but, but I, I will be here.
Don't know what they have.
Oh, yeah.
They ask, would you be willing to work? Right, that's the question.
I'm new, but I'm, I'm well experienced, knowledge educated, so I don't, I don't do it.
I mean, the setup really isn't that hard. And so, I'm asking that.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a reliever, I'm saying twenty-first, I don't mean...
Because I guess it's a, like, we haven't had a meeting on the eighteen, so if there's something else that we need to make sure, to give us another...
Give us a time to give it to churches and see if they wanna do like hot chocolate booths or something.
Yes, yeah, I'm giving you a note.
Actually, give me that, that off.
See if some churches wanna do hot chocolate stuff.
Yeah, I have a couple of organizations at schools that, at the school that were just waiting on me to have confirmation of a date, to see if they want just that.
Yeah, SGA, some of them, some of them.
So we just ask them for popcorn, hot chocolate, that's it?
That sounds great.
I mean, they, they want to... I was gonna say, they want to just pay what they want. And just keep a list so that everybody don't have the same thing.
So what time?
Have to be after dark, so after six.
It was dark at six.
I would actually do... Movie start, yeah, say the movie starts at seven, five, seven. Movie's probably two hours.
Such a lead?
Huh?
Well, I think you're gonna have more issues if the parents are working and then I get the phone.
That's okay, then we want to sit.
They got somebody that's keeping kids, who cares, let's do it.
Now, you would have both know, those kids are gonna be running wild.
They said, who cares, would they come on, out here and fill all the...
Seven, seven o'clock, we're coming first.
So the last time we did one, it started running and getting late. And I think we started, it said we started getting late and a lot of them started leaving because it was cold and it was late. Don't call that off. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, uh, before the December. That's not, that's, that'll be cold.
December twenty-first is southeast, don't you?
Yeah, sure, we'll move it.
Yeah, we need to get a little short movie. What movie, Georgia?
I don't know how.
It was that new one from twenty eighteen, what was it, Elf? I don't know.
The new Elf?
The new Elf?
Yeah, I do the classics.
Will Ferrell?
I don't know what it is. Sure.
Oh, okay. I already got a bill of real wealth with some of the people.
Yeah. When you want to take like...
We just look at what they, what... Because she sent us a list, they sent us a list, right?
She did.
You can play Madea's.
It was with Grant, it was, um...
Oh, that'll go over real well. Madea's, Madea's...
I mean, I guarantee you, I'll be there for Madea.
The Polar Express was one of them. And that's, they've done the Polar Express and the Jeff before.
Polar Express is always a good movie to play Christmas.
Yeah, that was, that's one of the movies they offer.
Polar Express.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a new Polar Express.
I don't know, I, I never made it through either one, so.
So, when, when will you have all the equipment?
I'll probably order it tomorrow.
Okay, because I wanna make sure, because I know a lot of times these devices have certain adapters. But I just wanna make sure, I got tons of them, but I just wanna make sure so we don't get out there and...
What about Home Alone?
Home Alone would be great. That would be a great movie. These kids ain't seen that? I've never seen that.
That would be a great movie.
We could do, what's one of them, you know? Remember the Froddles back when we were... We could do Froddler Rock Christmas.
Oh, bro. Pick five, put the name of the hat and draw it out. Hey, that's a movie. All right, uh...
What do we wanna do, the three movies or the one movie?
Give me, give me four, how about that?
I'm talking about the...
Oh, no, no, the part is, are we... Oh, the three movies.
Do we want to pay that for, get the cheaper price and just commit the three movies?
Three or...
If we're buying stuff, then I as well.
You wanna do three?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Make a motion to... Community movie night.
Community movie night, except the price of commission, committed the three movies.
All right. Do it here, second. Proper movement, second, all those in favor, signify by the same eye.
Thank you.
Curtis, come up here and talk to us.
Uh, I think that's more, I'll do my best. They've got two prices in your packet. They've got two prices in your packets. I think one is seventeen hundred, uh, that's one of the companies that came, is expecting. And that seventeen hundred, they'll give us a kiln. And then I think there's one in there where they would come and, um, repair the roof. Treat the molds, I think it's like five, six thousand dollars. I don't think, we should do it because, um, we know that there's mold there. None of us are certified to make sure it's gone. You still would have to have somebody come back in again and test. So when they did do the test, they find out that the air, nicely lightened out inside is better than the air outside. But, but you can see the pictures that we do have, there's mold in the roof. Around the bed. And I don't think that's something new. I think that's over a period of time of when the roof was leaking before. And you know, the conversation in a period of time, as you don't mind, that's what we have.
Do we know if there's anybody in the county has the ability to do this? Do you have anybody certified in there?
So the way this kind of came to be, when we did the last beautified Bronson Day back in May, April? I forget my words. Anyway, and we, um, May, and we were cleaning the library. We noticed it then, dentist was working for the county at that time, and he said he was gonna try and get his people to do it. But then obviously when we went and did the last beautified Bronson Day in October, it had none. And I said to Curtis, I said, listen, we just, we gotta, I mean, the people sit directly underneath that. You know, literally, when you walk into the library, it's the, I mean, you know, if you were there, it's the one right there. So I just, I just don't want to leave it any longer, I just don't think it.
Well, it definitely needs to be addressed. I'm just saying, you know, to see about the roof, that should be, you gotta get rid of that. Then you spray it.
Yeah, that's the current address, gave the price of five to six thousand dollars, that's what they would do. Turn it and take that out, treat whatever is there.
I doubt county's got anybody certified.
Um, I do know that they had a problem over at these old school.
Because it is old.
They go, yes, I mean, that they did have to go in there and do some stuff. I don't.
This thing that we need to be aware of, the company, they wouldn't even come to do anything until we had a tested. You know, so if we do fix it, or say we contract somebody else to fix it, are they gonna say that it's mold free? Or we're gonna have to have it retested again? Because the thing is, you don't want nobody, six months from now, a year from now, to come back and say, they sick because they was in the library because of the mold. And the only thing we have to say is that we repaired it, that we tested, that we do this, that we do everything that we need to do to make sure it will cover.
It looks better if you're the third and outside party, that's not county and not city, come in to do it.
And they recognize this group for mold.
Well, other than that, they can have a contractor somewhere that says, when they sign off and say we pay, and they say that it's free. It's mold free.
With the county?
Yeah, well, that too, just, just check with them tomorrow while you're there, just see if they did have somebody. Uh, also, if we talk to all of the cities on our nature.
You mean on a claim? Definitely not. For mold?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm, I'm getting proof of that.
It's never covered in a residential, I mean, it might be on a commercial, but never. Yeah, how'd you manage that?
All you're seeing, don't you see these signs up down here, the crosshairs? Mold, everything that you're seeing, all that is moving toward, see your teeth where they all that water in down there? Air filter, that homeowner's coverage is covered.
Well, if it's. Because it has a result of like flooding, where the flooding is covered and now it's mold, then yes.
I had it, I heard. My house.
Right.
We did that whole situation. Very small area. I had to have it ripped out, had to have it done. It's your people. Situation right there is we gotta leave from the roof. Hey, first of all.
Yeah, yeah, the trash.
My baby.
How long ago was it?
Three years ago.
They, they looking for reasons to cancel people now, so I don't know.
They canceled mine, but I got some more.
I do believe that if the mold is caused by an addition that's insured, then the insurance company.
They will take care of it. They didn't, they didn't want to do mine, but they did after that attorney.
But now, are we, but are we looking at the period of time that we have, that somebody can say, oh, sign off that this happened and doing this?
Well, and then you have to weigh it all, you have to weigh the option. Option is, is it worth?
It was an insurance.
The insurance bet to, to whatever the claim and all that stuff, because that factor is in also. It's worth a phone call.
So you want us to hold off until after I talk to them? Yes?
I would definitely do that.
We just want to bring to your attention because.
So we can go ahead, but there's no reason for us not to.
We can approve it and then we don't have to do it.
Based on, on what, what our finance service, I mean, you're regarding, it's still got to be done. I, I heard. Whether it's where the lady. And I agree with the fact that we have a very important to do it. Now, would the insurance company have paid for it or not? I don't know. In this case, they may not.
Is there a ballpark estimate? So they'll be able to give us something, it says between four and six thousand, that's just gonna pin on what they.
What they find, like once they, once they get it.
So at the low end, four thousand, at the most it'd be six.
Right, because what they looking at, that once they cut it out and they get up there, if the mold is travel eating, you know.
Right.
Then it could be more than just that section, it could be a lot more.
Thank you, Curtis.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, accept it.
To accept it and I'll try and see if I can get somebody else to cover it?
Make a motion to accept the quote for the mold remediation in the library.
All right, I have a motion.
Ask it.
And we have a second. All those in favor, in the front of discussion? All those in favor, signature by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, same motion. Deal?
First thing I talked to Lonnie Terry today about the truck. He says he hasn't been able to get to it yet because he's had other vehicles in line first. Uh, it's open this week or beginning of next week. Should get that done hopefully soon. Other than that, um, for the month of November, we had a hundred and twenty-seven incidents total. Which averages four point two in twenty-four hour, thirty twenty-four hour period. Some days there were none, and some days we had eight or nine calls for the whole day, most of them during daytime. We're up to one thousand a month. That's at the end of November, there's one thousand here in twelve thousand. A little bit over there now. We had three calls for building fires, two were each related, one was, um, last week. Down one of three, one of three terraces. We had a camper, uh, individuals were staying in a, uh, travel trailer, and that had an explosion from, uh, buildup of propane. So the lady, the lady that was there, she got burned bad, um. And there was another individual who was not there just.
What was the propane for?
Um, for the, the stove.
There could be some.
Two, yeah, they had two twenty-pound cylinders. And there was a furnace, a water heater, and a stove. The furnace and water heater were not connected, weren't utilized, so it was all part of the stove, but there had been a buildup somewhere. That just, for one reason or another, finally left. They had to go through, apparently they've been going through propane for the past few weeks quite a bit, so it's been leaking. It just had buildup in a great thin area, and like it hit, uh, the case. Over six, sixty-four percent of our calls were medical, first aid, uh, maybe one of those, and then. From vehicle accidents, wrecking of them. A number of assist individuals, and we kind of get them, uh, lift assist, helping people up there far. Thank you, rescued me in the parking lot a little bit because they came.
All right. Any questions or anything for Jim? Thank you, sir. Mr. Ward, you got anything?
Nothing, I can't know.
All right. Curtis, we got anything that we need to discuss?
No, but they may work through right now.
Yeah, I know you've been busy with it, at the city, at the government, and I want to say that, uh, I appreciate your effort. Everything is continuing to run smoothly and that's, that's still a good benefit for us, because I appreciate that, that opportunity. Mr. J?
That hole looks fantastic. So nice. And the signs look so nice. I don't know how y'all missed the one on the corner of School Street and Glover Street, did you replace that one? Cause it look like it's the same one. And it's like, it's faded out.
School Street Glover, I, I'll have them take it.
Just, um. Right there to church. It's like faded, but all the ones that y'all did was so nice.
That might be the only ones that were ordered without you.
And the rose was really nice, the hole, the pop over. I'm sure somebody's gonna go over ninety miles probably. I would have been right.
All right, just stop.
Nothing for the fire department I could think of, they, um, me and Sue were, got a meeting with John Meeks and, I guess, not over Dean anymore. About animal control tomorrow after the county commissioners meeting. Hopefully we can.
Said not over Dean anymore?
Yeah.
And invited him, he declined.
Yeah. And, uh, so hopefully that, yeah.
He is so faded.
Right, nevermind.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's tomorrow, we're gonna try to get that wrapped up hopefully.
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
The calculation meeting starts at nine. Probably get over about five.
Yeah, yeah.
If you guys need lunch, call, I'll be at the office, I can drive around for you.
You want to.
I called Hudson Foods, waiting for them to respond back about the, um, or wait for email me to stuff about the spirit pump thing.
Oh, they responded to you?
No, she picked up the phone.
They responded to the email?
I sent an email, but they never responded.
She picked up the phone, I called her. The spirit pumps that they do, like the other gas stations, they got the chief on Newberry, they got like a pump, if you get however much of the amount they donate. Proceeds from that pump or something to the school.
I sent it to somebody at whoever runs Hudson Food Stores.
Life's in perfect.
And we want the spirit pump.
I do, I do want to say something about it. Uh, me nor anybody up there, you'll ever turn out an email asking for money.
Oh, I get, I get, I get them, they, they email saying to him all the time.
I mean, nothing.
I still get them.
I like to go on my, I like to go on the station.
I want to answer the phone.
I told her about that. I did, I just think if anybody get one of the new like.
Yeah.
That would put me in eyes, and she said, uh, yeah, let me, uh, you know your stuff about it, and then I have got an email, so.
How long ago was that?
A week or a run after our last meeting.
I don't know. Time for less appearance, so they're not willing to contribute. So we got two other gas stations in Bronson. Get out. Uh, is it in by a van or anything?
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, nothing. Um, for the December twenty-first thing, um, as soon as we have it confirmed and we know what the movie is, let me know, and then I can send a email blast out to the school, and then I'll send it again. On the last day so that we get that. And tomorrow, I'll start letting our clubs and all of our sponsors know that it's that day and see what they want to do. I know we want to do something for athletics.
What are, what are the movies, uh, Sugar Down, Polar Express?
Well, doesn't home have the little.
What are the movies, you want to write down, she gets to draw one of the hat?
They have the, the Polar Express, they offer that one too. I mean, I don't.
All right, like I say, I never watched the whole thing.
You don't. It's about a train.
Are you gonna, are you gonna do anything deep enough to it? Okay? Are you gonna do anything deep enough to the movie night? So start at six thirty or seventh thirty or whatever, what about the hour and a half or whatever before that? You know, while people coming in or whatever, you.
You want to.
Well, I'm just, I'm, you know, just being in the entertainment field and doing stuff like that, dead air is kind of bad stuff when, you know, when you got something going on before things happen. So even if it's, well, no, what, cause what I was thinking was, in my mind, when you first mentioned it, I was gonna already put something together where there was already music or something playing. So that there is no dead air when people coming up, because dead air is just not good.
You're the man with the. Whatever, whatever you want to decide is good for.
So if we're, if we're asking people to, to, um, donate whatever, to, to it, how many people should we ask for? Like if they were gonna serve hot chocolate, how many people would do it?
Can you let me see, can you, can you let me see if I could get some of the school organizations that you guys are doing? And then if that doesn't work, then we'll go outside there. I talked to him this morning, we was on some other stuff, so, um, he was, he didn't say anything about the cemetery, but I will make sure he knows the library.
He's concerned about the light on the front door, which I think, uh, public works is worried on that, gonna do.
It takes two weeks.
It takes two weeks, I talked to him last week.
Yeah, so you know, it'll be a Christmas present.
It's in the works.
And the other areas where the, like that light on the corner of the school board row, that light is back on, so they did fix it. And then the light of, of Glover Street is back on because it was off. So those, you can't see at those spots now.
The light at fifth room flashes. Like it's, it's on some nights and some nights it's on.
Yeah, we, we had this, we tend to do a gate in the lots.
Oh, are we, are we putting up Christmas lights in town? We are. We're doing something.
We said home bug.
We're not giving a Christmas, so there, we have a lot of lights that are burnt out. And we were talking about having volunteers come and replace the bulbs, but Curtis had decided to just buy a bunch of like string lights, and we're gonna string the lights within the actual ornament things.
Go take the old lights off and put the new lights on.
Okay.
Those lights that, that's with the, um, the owners now, they have fuses in them, and time, you know, you get up and you plug them in, it just popped the fuse, so. We need something that don't have a fuse in it, so they ordered some lights, so as soon as they come in, we'll put them on.
Come in Wednesday.
All right. Anything else?
Are we gonna have Santa at the Christmas in the park?
Well, it was the, um, fire, it was the fire scene for last minute one time.
If staff are gonna be, there's gonna be time to have, um, payment. Rodney, so he has people that will work. Maybe cheaper than paying for a bus, time to have.
Yes, we offer our student do whatever she wants.
So nice of you.
All right, anything else? I'll entertain motion, please, please.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, signature by the same guy.
Well, that's, maybe I sat so long today, like this. You, too many, my ear doesn't work. Because the pressure comes up, so it's a combo of sounds, so if you just keep randomly in the meeting, we have not here.
I'm just having surgery on her ears, twenty ninth surgery, they had to cut out, cut out her eardrum again, I put a part of her shoulder, replaced the eardrum. Twenty ninth surgery on her ears. And she has some head tumor that's gonna cut out, all around the bone, but the eardrum out.
Um, my cousin getting married this weekend, so he trying to have to build this stuff up, we have to go out. Terry could get married.
We'll talk about it at the meeting, but fire department might make a good idea.
I see you got your hat.
Yeah, I can't, can't go with that, can't go with that one, sure.
Well, y'all have, y'all sharing at y'all house. She made, um.
Yes, sorry.
Y'all, I mean, you can take mine when you're doing it, Sherri.
I can't beat your dog.
I can't beat my child.
He asks me every day, he said, you got any food?
He said, Kiera was sitting right.
I'm like, nobody got her food. Then he found a bag, he found my bag of Doritos, I can have those, I'm like.
That's how you know they're related, Kiera was constantly.
Ms. Teresa is just a, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he run through there.
That's how Kim and Kiera work, straight with Teresa.
Andrea just comes in and I get there and she just walks out and smiles.
I'm the same way at the office though. He still cook something and I'm in somebody's office, what are you eating?
Ms. Teresa can't eat, can't use treats, man. They were good.
Oh, man.
She made a new recipe?
Teresa, we thank you for this beautiful Lord's day, we thank you for the blessings of life, Lord, you best stay upon us. Lord, we ask you to go with us tonight during this meeting, that everything we do will be pleasing to your eyes, and that it just falls in the heat out of our God. In Jesus' precious name we ask, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to thank anyone for coming out tonight to our last meeting of the year. First and foremost, wish everyone a happy holidays, y'all a Merry Christmas, sir. And I am not too quick to understand about that, so Merry Christmas, sir. I wish you a happy year and all that kind of good stuff, so. Alright, with that being said, uh, roll call. Curtis is here, Jill has just walked in, Wendy's here, Miss Sue is here, Todd is here, Franklin is not here, he is recuperating. Mr. Virginia's here, Miss Sherri's here, and Mr. Warren is zooming in on us tonight, correct?
Okay, sir.
Alright, that being said, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Y'all got a chance to deliver.
Move approval of the agenda.
They've promptly moved to second, approve the agenda, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Both, same motion carries. And this is on the approval of the minute for the December the fourth, twenty twenty three town council meeting.
New approval. Minutes for December fourth, town council meeting.
I said.
They've promptly moved to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Both, same motion carries. Alright, public participation, uh, you need to complete the speaker's request form, submit it to the deputy clerk. First podium, speak clearly and state your full name and address for the record, comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. And first up on the agenda is Miss Sherri, I'm gonna turn it over to you for our student of the month awards.
Alright, it is my pleasure to, um, present these awards to these young ladies, because the girls are running things there. Um, we got Ms. Grace Davis. We also have this dynamic duo of Kinzada and Alexis Russ. And all of these are students that have either taught or coached.
Good students.
Oh, yeah, they're important. So these girls are good, um, role models and good students.
Congratulations. As much as I know that y'all just love to listen to all this stuff, we are not gonna hold y'all, but I know you have schools, so if y'all want to leave, you're welcome to do so, but.
Yes, I got it.
Yes, I understand, we, we definitely understand.
He hadn't been quiet.
Exactly. So, thank y'all very much, congratulations again. Alright, Mr. Allen, move it up.
Well, you know my name, I said again, I did. Uh, a question, on the, uh, the wreath for the cemetery. Counties feel give y'all money for that to get one?
Give us money?
Yeah, for the wreath.
No, somewhere around, you have to give money to the county to do it.
Yeah, well, well, whatever, who, who buys it, who gets it?
We do.
Okay, who puts them in the cemetery?
They do.
You can't help the county.
Okay, so it's them that miss a lot of us. Well, I would like to get a list from you, um, who they are, whether, do you have a couple of that?
Yeah, I remember I gave it to you at the, I mean, I have it, but remember I gave it to you at the cemetery committee, but I can get you the list again.
Okay, alright, that's what I was gonna say, we got some messing this out there. John, John immediately called me, when they doing it?
Did you look?
I was like.
Past Saturday? Did you look past Saturday?
He didn't, it's alright, right?
Yeah, they did it Saturday.
Well, I, nobody called me, cause I usually go over to the cemetery, well, yeah, we're there, we always do it together, but I, I didn't get that call.
They did it Saturday.
And it was very.
Check it again, then we'll check back with us, okay?
Oh, okay, but some messing this out there, I'm gonna check.
Well, you wanna make sure, we wanna make sure everybody get their. Alright. Alright. That's it, we got it, everybody in, okay. Information, our community meeting night in the park is Thursday, December the twenty first.
We ain't talking about that right now, but.
Right now. Is all y'all.
Park's wet.
The park is unwatered.
It's extremely wet out there.
Wanna move it to the fire station maybe?
I'm not gonna give.
We move to the fire station?
Can if you want.
If you move it to the fire station, just that you order forty parties, so.
Yeah.
That you can keep all the kids in the general area, like they set up for the, um, Wi-Fi.
Do we have enough chairs?
I think it was a bring your own chair.
Yeah.
It was a bring your own.
Or blanket.
Blanket, yeah, whatever you wanna sit on.
That'd be a space here.
Um. It was the fire station, another suggestion was the setting up on the basketball court and make it sit in the parking lot of the park, but that did cost a lot, a hundred and two.
And the only thing with that is that that stream, if the wind blow, you know, we had it all tied up, we did put it up, but when the wind blow, the, the top part is, is falling out.
Flimsy, yeah.
Um, so we had some ropes, we put some ropes in the rafters that, for the, um, for the tall, for the big, that seemed to work, but we don't have anything to secure it, if the wind blow, it is, it's. The way it's, the way it's made, it's just like a sail, a ship sail, it just, it's going in.
Alright, y'all, y'all.
I got a question. Do you think the county would let us use the old gym and we could put it in there and do the big inside? And we could put the thing on the court, the screen on the went in, and then people could sit in the bleachers and. Little kids could sit on the floor if they wanted to. Then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be outside, so it would be out of weather.
Still gotta figure it. I know a couple of classes are signed up to do it.
Okay, we can. So you have like the extension area for some of them, and then you have the other side where the water fountain is, so we could just, and then there's electric, the electric and everything is there. Bathrooms are already there. We need porta potties.
You just need the permission, everything's there.
Yeah.
Last time we had me check, cause they had a lot, had moved a lot of their stuff from the courthouse over here.
So, our little kids just went in there for basketball the other day and they went in there and the floor is kinda slick and slippery, but for what we wanna do, I don't think it would be an issue. I don't think there's nothing inside.
And I agree, I would suggest having Plan A and Plan B, both of them.
Well, we can ask the county tomorrow, and then if that don't work, we can go fire it.
Cause Sherri, you can put the, people that want to sell stuff, you know, when you walk in, they have that space on the right and on the left, what they used to do, it was good stuff.
Alright, you know, you first walk in, so you walk past them.
I, I think you, you would have to ask the board about that, I think you could straighten it.
Yeah, we got, we can send our cleaning lady in there, after words, don't get the cleanup bees.
So, okay, we good with that then?
Yeah, Boston County, we're on.
Alright, uh.
We've got everything, like, chocolate and.
Groups that are gonna do fondue cakes, another group is gonna do, um, Oreos, uh, we're gonna do, we have the, I got the popcorn machine cleaned today, order popcorn, it's gonna be here tomorrow. So we should have plenty of snacks and foods, they're gonna do this fondue. No, no.
I bought bags, like two hundred bags.
Oh, now you tell me.
Well, we did it just in case nobody got, nobody don't get big bags of popcorn.
I was gonna go rolling about pre-plott popcorn.
They really don't even ready for popcorn.
Nah, we have a, a machine that was in the football, it's what you're saying, they're not using it, I get it, I gotta clean that today, so.
You can still sell some caramel popcorn for the people.
Anyway, those people can bring their own caramel. You, you doing, you, you is doing too much. As far as inside.
Alright, we good to go on that, sounds good, it's time if y'all got a plan in place, we'll do it again.
If Zane approved that, then I can send an email a blast out.
Yeah, I'll put it on Facebook.
Put it on some jobs.
Sounds good. Okay, bread of the mighty food bank, mobile food drop is Friday, the twenty second, at nine thirty AM, please remember. Y'all show up before nine thirty. Cause they're gonna turn you back, that calls is the back call. Was it nine thirty or nine o'clock?
I think they said eight thirty, eight thirty? People were lighting up like an hour before, right?
Let me ask a, let me ask a question on that, what's the problem, I think the problem is really those trucks, cause I've been there, it's kinda hard for them to go back. And when people are up real early, and what's the problem with opening up their game on the end, letting them in?
I, I don't think there is a problem with doing that, I, I don't think that was the problem, I think the problem was the traffic.
Gets all the way out to twenty seven.
Not being able to get in the two of their houses, that's just a question. So, I think that's where the, where the question is. So anyhow, that's taking place Friday. Town hall will be closed Monday, December the twenty fifth, and Tuesday, December the twenty sixth, Christmas. Town hall will be closed on Monday, January the first, for New Year's. Our next town council meeting will be Tuesday, January the second, at six PM. Uh, town roster would like to welcome Kelly Wells, who has moved her desk.
Where, where, where they at?
She's already been here before, she just been from part time to full time, so she's been here before in the community.
And the town roster welcomes Ms. Vicky Malone, is that her name? As administrative assistants, she's a male employee, part time.
No, she hasn't started yet, she starts tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow, okay, so we'll try to get her in here for this connection, thank you.
So, Kelly went from the administrative assistant to utility clerk, so that's a good thing, she already trained, and then the other ladies.
She was trained for a couple of weeks before we actually heard that, she actually trained that.
And the administrative, is that a full time?
Part time, part time.
Also. Do we need to mention that Friday?
I mean, yeah, uh, just a reminder that the luncheon, the holiday luncheon is Friday, at eleven thirty at. For city employees and fire department, um, at, uh, the give your government chief one.
Everything is pre-arranged, all that, take care, okay, I'll get one of my bricks. Yeah, okay, alright, Sue?
Okay, um, I just wanted to, this is a little off topic for just a second, but just wanna let everybody know that we started doing interviews for Fire Chief today. Um, our first one was today, um, we're gonna have, uh, interviews this week, we have two more scheduled for this week, and we have two scheduled for next week, so there's a total of five people that we're interviewing. Um, today it was myself, Councilor Jorge, Wendy, and Fire Chief Clayton from Marion County. Sorry, I was just saying, Marion, sorry, Madison County, um, so we were the interview team, and then, um, of those five, the two finalists will come before the council for you guys to, um, to interview. Do you want to schedule those interviews during a regular council meeting, or do you guys wanna do it as like a workshop on an off night? It's up to you guys, do you already have the list of questions?
Do we do the five o'clock meeting before six o'clock or six o'clock?
For me, it's what I was, could we do that? You did a five o'clock before or six o'clock meeting?
That would be better for me than a different night.
Do a five o'clock before six o'clock.
Okay.
Are we gonna do both in the same night, or one on that and the other?
Probably easier if you do them both on the same night.
Yeah.
Cause spreading that's gonna make the process take even longer than it would take.
Thing is, we probably can't do that all in one hour.
That's what I was about to say, we were there for around forty five minutes, today we just walked.
Yeah, but y'all know what pinpoint to bring to us, right? They shouldn't take the same amount of time in front of us that it takes for y'all.
Well, and you should ask them the same, like, if you have like the standard set of questions, we have.
We have the questions. We have the questions already, um, we're asking more, we're trying to delve more into like your fire experience, and we want you guys to do more of like, get to know you, make sure it's a good fit. Um, I just don't know if we can do both of those in one night, that's my only. Unless we did like, we could do that Tuesday, the second, maybe the following Monday, even though it's an off council week. Could you do it off week?
Yeah, I have to look at basketball speed.
Yeah, well, let's just kinda, keep playing by your role, we'll try and. Cause I mean. Could you schedule one early, like at four, then schedule one at five? People make it in for four? Or is that way too late for you? I could do that.
I could, I could do that.
Okay. My desk is a little late now anyway, okay.
Do you think those interviews for us is gonna take?
Yeah, might take a while.
I probably have a lot of questions.
We have twenty questions for you guys. Yeah, I mean, no, but it's a question, it, it's an hour.
I have a question.
It's an hour, yeah.
Question.
Yes, sir.
We, uh, well, the position is an officer, we gave it an hour. We, uh, for the position that's in the office, we did it in hours. We already got the fireman back there, why we over there?
I don't know. He's actually one of the candidates.
Well, he shouldn't have to be a candidate. Just like you did in the office, why he can't move it?
We did exactly the same thing we did in the office, we advertised. Just cause we don't advertise on the marquee doesn't mean we're not advertising. We advertise on indeed and all that, it just depends on who gets the position and who doesn't.
We get, we got a problem, we advertised on the marquee?
No, we just didn't advertise with the marquee.
Well, let's remember, I remember when that guy from that Baptist church was here, he had a beautiful marquee. I would like for us to have one, but we said it was too much money.
They might take that.
And he offered, he offered us, you know, I got to do a chair, and he is good for it.
And he has it, yeah, he has. I've asked him to put stuff up there. He does.
Well, we need to put that one.
We can, we just haven't asked him for that. Normally I do like community events, like the movie nights and the rent food bank.
Try asking for that.
I can. I mean, eventually we should have our marquee at the fire department at some point, right?
It's not a problem.
Yeah, waiting for it.
Dustin, your favorite expensive, cause we may want one at a school, but every time we price them, it's like the arm, the leg, and five or six kids, we gotta pay them.
Okay. Okay, um, so I have two things for you tonight, and a whole lot, but, um, first up, I wanted to just talk about the road reconstruction on Wilson Avenue, um, to kinda get everybody up to speed since we are finally at that point. Um, so, we were originally awarded three hundred and, it's three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to reconstruct Wilson Avenue from twenty-seven up to Patterson Street up to the curb. Um, again, the bids all came in much higher than that, so FDOT agreed to give us the additional funds, it's now a five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar, um, grant. The engineer is our normal engineer, Mid Tower associates, the contractor is gonna be John C. Hip Construction, and then our, um, inspection company is North Florida Professional Services. So, they're gonna be starting, starting on Wednesday, they're gonna be starting, you know, clearing, scrubbing, um, relocating power poles, and then obviously, you know, paving, drainage improvements, striping, all that stuff. Um, the contractor will be putting out construction ahead signs in the vicinity, so people know. It's gonna take, they're gonna, they plan on doing construction between seven thirty a.m. and five P.M. or later, is what they said. And the most important part of this is that Wilson Avenue is going to be closed for six months, approximately six months while we do this. So, closed, from twenty-seven to the curb, nobody's allowed to go in and out there. So they want us to come up with a detour. Um, the detour would be, you know, if you're coming out, Ninetieth, you're gonna go left on School, right on Capitol, left on West Main, that'll bring you back to twenty-seven. That's pretty much the, the big stuff there, um.
Do the people that live in that area know that it's gonna be closed or safe?
Um, I, there's only one person that lives there that's affected, directly affected. I did send a certified letter to them. There's not a lot of people that live on that street. Or not a lot of people, they couldn't go and alter the route with that. Um, the person I actually sent the letter to is because right now they have a fence that is propped up by brush, the easement. So, the second we start clearing, that fence is gonna fall down. So, we basically give them a heads up that they need to do something with their fence, so they know this is gonna be happening. Um, the other big thing is that Curtis brought to my attention, since we're already gonna be going in there anyway, it might not be a bad idea to install a water line up out of street, if we currently don't have water. So Mid Tower is working with John C. here right now to get us a price, as to, obviously that would be outside of this grant, as to what it would cost to actually install water. Um, because we figured once this is paved, people may actually wanna, what else is there, the business is there, whatever. So, um, I don't know what that dollar figure is gonna be. Yeah, it probably is gonna be higher than we all imagined, but we'll see, so.
It's like if you went in to try to do water on a after person, you have to.
Correct, it's gonna cost you to do it, so we figured while we're already there, we might as well at least, you know, entertain the option, so. But yes, Wednesday's the big day, starting finally, finally starting.
Yeah, well, I can tell you. Now, it's been a wait.
Doesn't make sense.
There are times that we need to look at possibly borrowing money to do a project, I guess, it's just gonna be waiting a bunch of time. Okay, uh, oh, you got one more then?
I do, okay. So, next up is, just want to give you guys kind of an idea as to what Mid Tower's been doing for us. So, two years ago, they put in a grant application for, it was a total of about twenty-five million to expand, to convert the rest of the residents from septic to sewer, and then also to expand our, um, waste water treatment plant. We did not get that grant. They reapply this year. This year it was actually up to thirty million to do the same thing. Uh, we haven't heard about that grant yet, we're actually supposed to hear it this month. And it was a different, um, funding source, the Springs A M U S, um, projects the middle. They just came up, the due date was last Friday, so they submitted it again. But they did it a little differently. They submitted it as a five-year multi, multi-year contract. They figured if they did it over five years, they might have a better shot than getting just a big, you know, fourteen or eighteen million dollar project. So, um, we did that, and then we had a lot of conversation back and forth as to whether or not we would actually need to upgrade, expand and upgrade the waste water treatment plant. So, right now, we're permitted for eighty-three thousand gallons per day. We use about twenty-four thousand gallons a day, so it's about twenty-nine percent capacity, way under capacity. The project would add an additional two hundred connections, which is about forty thousand gallons a day, so a total of sixty-four. At that point, we're at seventy-seven percent. It used to be that at seventy-five, that was where you had to start really looking to, to upgrade your, your facility. They changed that recently to say that you have to do, it's based on a capacity analysis report, so kinda what, what, um, Florida rule wanted to do for us recently. So it's all about a three-month rolling average. Um, and I put it in your, your report, basically, it's, you know, depending on how much you're flowing, you know, you may have to do just a regular report, you may have to actually submit a, um, a project proposal. It just depends, but we don't have, the point is that even if we get this, we don't have to upgrade the, the plant at that point. It's really dependent on what happens in this capacity analysis report. So, I am hoping that the way they submit it this time, we actually will get it, that would be fantastic.
Did they, when they, when you get turned down for it, did they tell you why they turned you down?
The last time, yes, they did. They told us that they asked for too much money and it was too far out. They put the start date as something like, I don't know, eight months away or something like that. So they've been trying, that's why I'm saying they, you know, tried to go this route, and then they're trying to make the start date sooner.
Okay.
So, um, it's not that we don't, I mean, obviously we have need, it's just, you know, they have to prioritize what they, you know, decide to fund, so. I do think this is probably the better way to, to go, so. Hopefully, we'll get it. It's already just been, it's submitted on Friday, so, that's all I got for you.
Okay. Any other questions? Good turn now. Alright, uh, Curtis?
I have anything, I'm good.
Just wait.
Just wait.
Enough they have a trip up for engine replacement, he said the end of the week. I just say that every time I say it. But, so, find out about that. Another thing that I was gonna bring up, but, two years ago, we started the process of getting the fire truck. We submitted a, we applied for a USDA grant, and they, for two vehicles, they have, they have approved it thirty-five percent. The fire truck came out to be fair at forty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars, and they advised us before, we wouldn't get the whole thirty-five percent, we only get a hundred thousand for that. Which comes out to about twenty-nine percent. So, that has come in, and it's been, um, it's in the bank last Thursday. Yeah, so, um, the other truck, we, we have to go back to, it's very long to say what we wanna do with that, because the original plan is gonna cost too much for what they agreed at, and we have to write to USDA representative to see if, and we, could we just edit the narrative of the previous application we have developed through the other applications, so, inside that states.
This is for another truck in addition to the truck we just.
Yeah, yeah, we never, we never talked about.
It's a quick response truck. You know what either, doing the, they're getting, they're getting another one now, we're talking about maybe just putting the money into the squad that we have, re-upending the box and putting the motor, all that stuff.
We're totally sure we have now, it costs less than.
Trying to get them.
Okay, the new ones, a hundred and twenty plus, if we put sixty or seventy into that one.
Yeah, the original, the original application was for a hundred and forty-four thousand.
Yeah.
They would, we've gotten forty-nine thousand from USDA, ninety-one of our own, we had to increase on the leasing, so we're trying to look to maybe keep that cost down a little bit.
Alright. Mr. Warren?
I have nothing to add.
Well, you're just on me again, okay? Alright, um. Curtis, we, everything good with us?
We good.
Okay. Uh, hopefully we gonna have, uh, we have, we do need to update, everybody's gonna be after the first of the year before Rodney gets his schooling and everything due, the holidays comes another jump up. Uh, so we're looking forward to that, and Curtis is definitely looking forward to it, so he is. And we want him to have his job back, or he can, I'm sorry, it's, it's been getting pissed on some of this stuff, so, y'all get bear with us, we're getting there, so. Um, so, like, so, Mr. Virginia?
Mister Tyler had mentioned that, um, that last speed bump on School Street going towards Eightieth does not have a speed bump sign on it.
Coming from the, coming from our way to Eightieth, very last, the old one.
Yeah, so there's one coming from Eightieth to School Street, but there's not one going from School Street to Eightieth. The one right in front of Mister Gil's house? Um, so we could get one right there, so nobody tears off the back of the vehicle. Not me personally.
I did, I'm not gonna lie. I left the chainsaw in the middle of the road off my trailer. I had to go back and get it.
Y'all was talking about this around here to get my bearings, pretty on that, and I had the gentleman, because, um, Dickie said, we're here at the church, he lives out that way. And he called me up the day that y'all put that thing on there, and he says, I like to lost my teeth. I hit that thing, cause it, it. The sign was there, you know, and he still hit it, cause it was just different one of this. He said, I hit that thing around about sixty miles an hour, and he said. Get it out of everybody.
Any more?
And not that one, but the one that was there before that one. I saw somebody hit it, and it cracked right up on the pizza, all the way across. Yeah, like, yeah. Okay, alright, anything else, Mr. Virginia?
I'm gonna start.
Tyler?
Uh, no, sure, you said we started the interview, so that's all I, that's all I was gonna say.
Michelle?
Looking forward to, um, Thursday.
Yeah, so, we'll make it happen where the.
So many people have said how interested they are in going to that.
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of the kids the past week, and they're like, even the older ones are like, what are y'all planning? I said, the new Grinch, they're like, yeah, we'll still be there.
It's better than Polar Express.
Nope, a lot of them, a lot of them said they'd rather see the Polar Express.
Well, you don't have to go rent it.
Uh, I did one thing, the GFL was happy with the polar sack.
Oh, I've mentioned.
Talking to garbage truck driver, he's like, it's really nice. He's like, I don't have to back down all the way down, so.
Good, good, good. Alright, y'all continue to keep your prayers for Franklin, for his, getting better and everything, you know, cleaning up, and uh, did we have anything from his department that we needed to bring? Uh, life is, we're just talking about the other thing, so we're gonna follow up on that. Okay. Make sure we get that right. Uh, Curtis, do you know anything about the cemetery and the library, anything we need to bring up?
Um, the library, I just, um, just gonna move forward and have circle come in, and, um, can't do it, do them all. I don't know, four or six thousand dollars, and I talked to him today, I told him tomorrow, you know, whatever we decided tonight. See, I already said that I'd show us, so I have it covered, so.
Was it, was that the only company that does it here?
There's some other organizations, but that's one of the well-known ones in Florida. We'll get rid of it right away.
It's a, it's, we have to hold out, get to have somebody come out and test it, and company that came out and tested, that's where we recommend that. We just hear, yeah, our future student.
Four to six.
Yeah, four to six thousand dollars.
It was three seventeen hundred for just the chemicals this week. I mean, just chemicals. It's not cheap.
We didn't approve it?
We were just looking at, I went back, we have heard, I had to look at the property policy, and then I did go to the county, but I've asked them twice, and they haven't.
Yeah, they.
They're probably not.
Well, there's, it's too much, there's a lot of changes. That's my angle. Get it done right, that's the thing, everyone will take care of it.
So, everybody, we need to go ahead.
Thank you, Curtis. Alright, uh, any other public participation, anybody else trying it, maybe let's, we'll interact with Lady Pierce.
My head hurts, I'm sorry.
I can tell. Alright, um, anybody else got anything else to move on? I was gonna take a motion on those bills.
Move approval, pay bills.
That's second.
Property moving second, if we pay our bills, all those in favor signify the same eye. Those who need, motion carried, meet the jury.